Interestingly, exploratory is now moving into their last of their rotations. We have two more in eight, then we go to nine. I had no idea how COVID would impact interest in tech. But right now I have just over 120 applications from the junior high and 42 non-residents. So obviously, the impact has been minimal for the future of what tech will look like. But right now, the biggest concern I have is in health careers and trying to figure out how to support those kids. And there's really not a lot of help from DPH, the Red Cross or DESI at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mrs. Leo, you have a question?
Um, Mark, I know that a lot of the vaccine clinics are using school nurses. So once, if the schools are pushed to go back in person, they may be looking for help with the vaccine clinics. I can get you in touch with the Worcester people if that would be helpful.
No, that would be great. I would love, it would be awesome if they would do the vaccinations at the schools. But everything that I've looked at and talked to people about is we don't have the capacity for the 15-minute wait time after a person's vaccinated. So that's going to be the biggest issue. So.
I didn't know, I didn't know if the students could help out at other clinics was what I was saying.
If, if you.
For hours.
Yep. Ms. Leo, if you can get me that information, I would be more than happy to, to work with our kids and our teachers.
Other questions for Mr. Wood? Mr. Sturgis, anything to add to your report?
Uh, yep, I actually have a couple of things that were not, were not in the report just because of timing. There's my cam.
You're on.
And for some reason, I'm seeing my own name.
Yeah, I do too. I don't see the picture.
I don't see you either.
You were just on a moment ago and now you're gone.
There we go. Oh, can I start video? I don't know, but you can hear me.
Yes.
You want me to go on? But I, I do want to add just because of timing. Just for not being in the report, um, just that we received in the past couple of days, multiple, uh, one donation that I've asked for you guys to permission to accept was from Patrick Subaru of Shrewsbury, um, our student council, which was in the report. Um, they had a project in January where kids were able to build, uh, no sewed blankets. And we ended up donating them to, uh, half of them went to the NICU in, um, at Brigham and Women's Children's Hospital. I, I think the report said Boston, but that's, I gotta clarify that it went to the NICU of Brigham and Women's Children's Hospital. Uh, and so Patrick Subaru and, uh, works with them and another charity of Y Me, um, which is a cancer, uh, charity. And, um, they work with them regularly. So Patrick Subaru got wind of our project and wanted to reimburse our student council for their efforts. And so they've offered a $600 donation to reimburse our student council for everything they did with that project. Um, so that was one request for, to accept that donation. And then, uh, we've received a grant, uh, last year, we received a grant from the Attorney General's Office for our Save Sandy Hook Save Promise Club. Um, they offered a, um, a $500, um, they offered a $500 donation, uh, towards our, towards the program for any program who, uh, is implementing it during this COVID year. And our student council has been extremely active since September, uh, trying to maintain these projects. And so Sandy Hook Promise actually took our application and granted us the $500. Uh, so that just came in on Monday evening. So, uh, they were, that did not make the report, uh, unfortunately. Um, but then the big request I had that Dr. Nozak, I know, shared with you folks this afternoon. Uh, hopefully everyone had a chance to see it is, uh, I applied for a grant to the Mass Department of Transportation to install a sidewalk that would go from Route 148, the main road, uh, and connect all the way up to the front of the school. And the location would be up the side of, uh, the right-hand side of the entrance to the driveway. And it would connect to the staff parking lot on the right-hand side, superintendent side of the building. Uh, right now we have a path, uh, plowed in snow, uh, and with cones that kind of make a safe walkway for kids. Um, but we've realized not only because of COVID, it helped keep kids off the buses, to allow their siblings to drop them off at the high school and staff, kids to walk back and forth. But it also reduced the amount of cars in our morning commute and morning traffic. And as when we're back to a normal year, if we're able to continue to have a safe way into the school for our kids, uh, this grant opportunity would allow us to cover the cost of installing it. Uh, what I learned in the past, uh, 12 hours of working with Jeff Bridges, the town administrator of Sturbridge, and with the Department of Transportation is they need, um, it needs to come from the municipality in the town of Sturbridge for us to have a chance of getting the grant. And Jeff Bridges has backed up, backed this, um, this, this plan. It has been full support from the town and has been on the phone all day with Department of Transportation representatives. And it comes down to the grant application processes. Uh, they need permission from the school committee to allow the town, uh, to build the sidewalk on our property. So I, I apologize for the late notice, but I just got with that information given to me at 3:00 P. or 2:00 P. M. this afternoon.
So Greg, just so I'm clear, there's, there's a request to accept the donation and there's a request to authorize the Mass dot grant or endorse it, I should say.
Correct. There's two separate requests there.
There was a third ask you had.
It was to donate.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'll need a motion, uh, to, uh, accept the two donations as outlined by Mr. Sturgis.
So.
Motion's been made by Mr. Hagerty and seconded by Mrs. Randall. Is there any discussion?
Just a question. Is there any?
Oh, you went on mute. Okay.
I, uh, is there any issue with, um, the student council keeping that money? I mean, there's no problem with them keeping it. Okay.
No.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the donations? Any objection to the acceptance of the two donations?
No, the sidewalk sounds like a great idea though, Greg.
We're going to get to that one next. All right then, by unanimous consent, I'll deem approval of and acceptance of the two donations. Uh, and then next I need a motion to endorse the Mass dot grant, uh, in partnership with the town of Sturbridge. Is there a motion?
So. Can I just?
Mrs. Barnacle, is there a second?
Sue, yes.
Second of Dr. Waters. Okay, Aaron, you had something?
I just wanted to take, um, just the language that the town provided for us and just to be, um, sure we're good. And that's the vote of the school committee authorizing the town to construct the sidewalk if the grant is approved.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
Thank you.
Is there any objection? By unanimous consent, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Sturgis. Mr. Lucas?
Thank you very much, guys.
Yes, I just wanted, just wanted to update the committee on, we have started fall to sports. Monday football started. We have 45, uh, students signed up for football. Um, they are often had three, three great days of practice so far. We are following our safety procedures that were shared in the fall, very similar to that, to that. Um, as much as possible, everything is outside. We have 44, um, girls signed up for volleyball. That begins March 1st. Uh, we have 21 girls sign up for cheerleading. That begins March 1st also. And then we have for, for winter track, we have 26 girls and 13 boys signed up, but that does not start until March 15th. And that will be outdoors. Um, football is going to have five games. Volleyball will have approximately 10 games. Um, and track will have two outdoor meets in the stadium, track in April. Um, so everything's been shared with the Board of Health. Um, kids are very excited. It's great to see we have over 100 kids signed up for it. Um, in the Swickle Conference, we're also, um, different schools are in trouble with their fields because of all the snow. So the schools with turf fields are, uh, serving as emergency backups. We are likely to be an emergency backup with Quay Bog or David Proudey, um, to borrow our turf field for any of their home football games. Um, they would pay all the fees associated with that and everything else and fill out the insurance and all that stuff. But I just wanted the committee aware of that, that that's a possibility, that we're going to be their emergency backup for those two schools if their fields are non-playable. Um, at this point, Mike, I'm happy to take any questions on, this is fall two. We still have spring sports to come, um, which that, which should be a full schedule of spring sports, we expect all outside. But I'll have to take any questions on that.
Questions for Mr. Lucas on fall two? Great news.
Kids are excited. They're really, really psyched to get going.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. And there's a memo, but Mike brought this to our attention last month. So this just reinforces, uh, the, uh, graduation date.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. June, June 12th.
Yep.
And the green date will be June 13th.
Great. Great. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
All right. We'll move to committee reports. Students, we're up first. Good evening, Mary.
Hi, how are you?
Well.
Um, so today 13 student council members, including our advisor, our advisor, Ms. Val plunged in the snow in support of Special Olympics Massachusetts. Students and staff are being asked to submit videos or pictures of them plunging to our StuCo email as well. Um, in total, we raised $1,120 to help provide unified athletes with sports training and competitions. In honor of the Super Bowl, we asked students and staff to bring in cans of soup and place them on a table in the main foyer for which team they were rooting for. We got 75 cans of soup, which Mr. Lucas dropped off at the Wales Food Pantry. Um, we are also currently in the process of planning our mental health week and are hoping to roll that out on the week of March 17th. For Valentine's Day, each student and staff member had a cardstock heart with their names on it placed in the main foyer. And we kept these hearts up for four days to free each cohort. We also asked each student council member to make a card for a janitor, cafeteria lady and nurses. And we gave them flowers and we gave the janitors like a platter of snacks just to thank them for everything that they are doing. On April 9th and 10th, student council will be attending the annual Massachusetts Association of Student Council Annual Conference. This year it will be held virtually. And then the senior class board and I are also in the process of planning prom and the annual royalty competition. The royalty competition will be live streamed on April 15th and prom will still be held on May 14th as of right now.
Wow.
Great. Questions for Mary?
It is great.
Good update.
Mary, just, Mary, just a question. Uh, the Super Bowl can drive, um, which team ended up with more cans?
Um, Tampa Bay. Yeah, they won.
Yeah.
I have a big, big landslide.
Yeah, real shocker.
That's great. All right, Colby?
All right. So my, uh, report's going to be on Skills USA for the tech kids. So I reached out to, um, all of the teachers and Mr. Lamath and Ms. Carrier. And basically got a rundown of what's going to be happening since it's going to look a lot different this year. So Skills USA is going to look a lot different this year because we usually have it in person for the district's competition. But we can't do that. So we are gonna have all the schools that are participating. They're going to be taking the district written tests at their own schools and they're going to be monitored by their, or a board member. Um, once the paper tests are finished, they're going to be scored and winners will be announced later on. Uh, the board members are still finalizing what they're going to do when it comes to the hands-on portion in the state competition. Um, so for the state competition, students will not be staying over in a hotel like they usually would. Instead, they're going to be transported to and from the event daily. Uh, many students within the building are using study guides, textbooks, Quizlets, uh, and parts of past USA, Skills USA tests to study for the upcoming exam. Along with studying, students are also taking the time to hone their skills, whether it be on the job site or in the shops doing hands-on projects. Uh, some shops are also holding after-school sessions to study as a group and work on extra projects outside of school. And that is it for my report.
Thank you, Colby. Questions for Colby? Colby and Mary, thank you both very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
So, thank you. All right, that brings us to, uh, budget. Mrs. Noiz Miller.
Mute myself here. So we've had a couple of meetings since our last meeting. Our original Saturday meeting, when the full budget was presented, we were all in favor of it. There wasn't much change over the previous year. But then when the governor's figures came out, we had to meet again because, um, our budget percentage was going to be too high for all the towns to be able to, uh, support. So consequently, on the front page of the budget for next year, you will see the items that are driving the budget increases. And the amount that we needed to reduce in order to get to a 2.9% increase, which we're hoping the towns will be able to support. Um, hopefully everybody has looked at that. I don't know if there's any questions concerning, what was presented. Both the proposals, the budget subcommittee fully supported.
And if you'd like, I, I can give a little bit of, of state as well as local perspective, if that's all good.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
So I, I, and, and just not to be repetitive, but as you can see, the original budget was 3.7%. We've got a number of areas that are up, um, which we've already been talking about with this year's budget. You're out of district, um, tuitions, your liability insurance, unemployment is, well, a hundred percent up. Now that's only a $25,000 increase, but it is literally doubled because it's time to start paying the piper. Even though our unemployment, we had very little if any, but it, it's a factor that the state pushes out. Um, so we were not looking for much new with three exceptions. We requested and are still holding at keeping, if you all remember, we have a junior high nurse assistant that we're paying this year from grant funds that we, we think we need to keep there even pre-COVID. The, the, the issues in the junior high building with zero backup and a pathways program was, you know, what certainly made us nervous. So we have got that position in the budget. The first draft, which was supported initially, also included putting back in one of the three high school retirements last year. We didn't replace any of those three because we knew we were going to have a tough budget year this year. So we wanted to get one back in. And we were looking to add one senior high custodian after looking at everything we've done to the facilities this year and keeping up with the cleaning. Um, it, it's become apparent that we, we really need a little extra help in that area. However, when we were at a 3.7 budget and we saw a state budget that came out that is giving us nothing but $30 per student minimum state aid, we knew there's no way the towns could support. I am not saying that I think the towns definitely can support where we're at, but it's at least the 2.9% is, is a place that we can start having conversations when I'm also looking at the elementary budgets. Um, so we did pull out $200,000 worth of items. Although if you'll notice there, the budget subcommittee was gracious enough to leave us with $65,000 to be determined. So we knew we could retract two new positions. We could squeeze a bit out of library books and professional development. But then we're left with $65,000 that we're going to wait and see over the next few months. You get one or two unexpected retirement or just turnover in staff and that could be covered there before we started either nickel and diming or talking about using some grant funds. So that brings us to the 2.9. I want to let you know, and we'll be talking about it again at, in, at length at the public hearing. There are two very unfortunate events that happened with our initial state budget. One was in building the foundation budget. They used enrollment from October 2020. That's bogus enrollment, which we talked about actually when we did our, um, the central office budget for next year, we kind of had to look at what do we do for percentages? Because we have a decent number of students, far more at the elementary, but still enough students at the secondary level that have chosen to homeschool this year. So they didn't show up in our October 2020 enrollment, but we anticipate they're going to be back next year. Um, at the elementary level, they use numbers that there's a, a number of kindergarten students that plain old didn't come because they don't have to. So it was very disappointing to see. Now, of course, it comes on the heels of the horns that were tutored that this budget was going to fund year one of the Student Opportunity Act that got put on hold last year. Well, in reality, the only way that could happen is on the backs of lower false enrollment. So it did, not a one of our districts is slated to get any more than $30 per student of chapter 70. So that was a huge disappointment. Next, last year, we were going to get a little extra money from the Student Opportunity Act. But now that's sort of been washed away by our enrollment was very concerning. The other very concerning issue is, I've talked about S R two grants. So S R one, we, you know, we are there, there's a little bit left we could use to get through the rest of the year if we need to. The second round of federal grants that is coming and we heard was a good, um, amount is indeed a big number. It's a $400,000 number for Tantascwa with a life of September 23. So that should be money that we can spend because we didn't put in this budget. We didn't put additional staff to run remediation programs. We didn't put additional mental health services or adjustment counselors. And we all know we're going to need it. And we didn't bump up any facilities lines thinking, you know, we might need more, um, filter replacement. We just don't know yet. Um, if we had those grant funds to work with for the next two years, we would be able to address the issues, both, um, mental health, academic and facilities that, that we know are going to happen. The problem is that the first state budget threw in this little paragraph in the chapter 70 calculation that says municipalities who have an increase in minimum contribution in their calculation may choose to to literally just say, I want to use the S or your S, your federal grant S R two money to put toward our assessment. So I have to work with all of the towns and see what they really need to get through. Two of the towns actually didn't have an increase in minimum contribution, so they can't get to the grant funds. One town alone has a potential of taking $170,000 of that $400,000 pool just to put toward their assessment. So this is going to be a crazy year, a year of communicating with these folks and trying to understand what the town really needs to get through and help them understand what we need for the next two years and not have half of our money taken away before we even get to plan the additional services. So more to be continued. Next month I'll share more details on what towns could say. I just want to use some of your funds. Um, I am working with the finance committees one-on-one to say regardless. And again, that was around one of the budget. There's no guarantee that that language still lives by the time we get through the House and the Senate. But let's be honest, I don't know how the House and Senate takes it out without a whole bucket more of money, money to throw at communities and, and that's not going to happen. So we have to assume it's going to live and work with the towns to say, yes, you can do this, but can we convince you either to not do it at all or do it at a lower level than you legally could do it? And I bet some of those conversations at the elementary level too. So I wanted you to be aware of that as we move forward. All we're asking you tonight is to vote the 2.9% budget to move forward to public hearing. If you'll remember, we really don't talk about the assessments until we get to the public hearing. We try to concentrate on what's in the budget. So I'd like to try and do that in this crazy year for one more month. But, um, you at least have a peek of what's going to come down the road in March. And I'm sure there'll still be conversations in April and May this, and we'll keep you posted.
Before I make a motion, I don't know if anybody on the, anybody else on the budget subcommittee has anything they would like to add to it? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion for fiscal 22 proposed budget, 2.9% increase of $25,222,799.
All right, we'll bring that forward. It doesn't require a second as it's a recommendation of the standing subcommittee. Is there further discussion on the motion before you?
I just want to remind everybody that what we vote tonight can always go down, but we cannot increase it.
Wow.
Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to the proposal before you? Seeing none, that by unanimous consent, we'll proceed with that recommended budget to the public hearing next month. Uh, just a quick update and, and a note to the, to the group here. Uh, next month's meeting, uh, and public hearing will be in person. And so we'll be communicating, um, more on the specifics of that and, and, and location. But, um, it will be in person. So just a, just a reminder. And we've also moved our meetings to start at six o'clock. Obviously with a public hearing next month, we'll be doing the public hearing at six o'clock and then we'll have our regular business meeting, uh, following the public hearing. So our regular meeting will not begin at six next month. It will begin at the conclusion of the public hearing, probably roughly 6:45. Thank you, Mrs. Noiz Miller, and to the budget team. We'll move to technical. Dr. Waters. Sue, you're on mute, Sue.
You're on mute.
Yep. There you go.
Okay. Um, we've scheduled a meeting for March 9th at 5:30.
March 9th at 5:30.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move to curriculum. Mrs. Barnacle?
Yeah, we had our meeting at the end of January, probably. And I think most of my committee anyway will, um, agree with this. One of the most uplifting meetings that, um, we've ever been a part of. It was a wonderful meeting with students from both the junior high and the high school coming in and talking about what this COVID world experience has been for them and what things work in their opinions and what things don't. And it was, it blew us away, I think, actually. I, um, talked or I texted with both Mike and Greg after the meeting, just saying, I think these kind, this kind of a meeting should be held every single year. And it should be held with the committee as a whole. Because you should be hearing what the young people are thinking about the education that we deliver here at Tantascwa. Um, some of the things we touched on, we talked about some very basic things like they were tired of not having everybody have their camera on when they were having remote learning. Picky little things like that that mean a lot to them. Um, we talked about whether or not the school budget could afford blue glasses, the blue glasses for, um, reading computers. Um, and whether every student might get a pair of those. We talked about mask breaks and how there ought to be more dedication to the actual, um, time spent in mask breaks because that mattered to them. We talked about remote learning as opposed to hybrid learning as I, I think, you know, that the majority of kids just want to be in school with their friends, having their normal kind of year, um, just as all of us do at this point. Um, so it was a very valuable meeting, um, I feel. And I really want to thank Mike and Greg for bringing the kids together and encouraging them. We certainly didn't have to encourage them to talk because they were ready. They, they were ready and that was great. So thank you both for that.
Welcome. It was a great exchange. It was great to hear from all those kids. It was, it was a terrific meeting, Pat. I agree.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And I, I loved the junior high student who came prepared with his own presentation about why kids should be in school full-time. You know, it was like being at a business meeting or something. He, he was, um, he was very good. Anyway.
Pat, he was a lot, he was a last minute fill-in for a late, a late last minute scratch too. So he made that up right in that afternoon.
You did a great job. You really did.
You did.
Yeah, you did. You did. It was, it was really great.
It was great to see too, even when the students didn't agree with each other, they respectfully, uh, took turns sharing their opinion and weren't afraid to do that.
Right.
I thought that was terrific to see also. Uh, they did it in very respectful ways. I thought it was great.
Yeah, I do.
You have great kids.
Well, yeah, we do have great kids and, and I think we don't hear enough from them probably. And we just get our student reports, you know, at meetings. But this gave a much fuller picture of what their lives are like during this year particularly. So thank you both and thank you, Jody, for organizing. There you are.
Thanks, Pat.
Great.
Okay.
Uh, that will bring us to bylaw and policy. Mrs. Fitzgerald? Uh, that will bring us to bylaw and policy. Mrs. Fitzgerald, you've got, uh, quite a list here.
Actually, it's going to go very quickly, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we've got 11 policies on the agenda, but all of them are here on second reading with no changes from our first reading. So we're really asking for one single motion um, to adopt the first policy, amend the next seven policies and rescind the final three policies, all on second reading as noted.
All right, that's a recommendation of the bylaw and policy subcommittee. We'll bring that to the floor for discussion. Shell, is there anything you want to say before I open the floor?
Uh, no, I think, as I said, there wasn't a single, uh, difference between first reading and second reading. This should be, uh, assuming everyone agrees and has reviewed them should be, uh, quick work. And our next, and our next meeting will be on March 18th.
Great. Well, we have a motion before the body. Is there any discussion? Are there any objections?
No.
Seeing none, then by unanimous consent, I'll deem the motion approved.
And just so the subcommittee, uh, subcommittee, and Michelle knows this, but I, I, I didn't necessarily share with the subcommittee. We do have another stack of first readings kind of on deck. We, we ended up deciding to split them and put the new ones in March, the old ones in February because we knew we're not meeting again until after our March meeting. So
Right.
that stack of new ones are sitting there waiting for the March meeting.
And, and quite frankly, we're going to be in person in March. It's a lot easier to respond to questions and go through first reading motions when we're in person. So we thought it was wise to push it for that reason.
Totally agree. Great. Thank you, Mrs. Fitzgerald. That'll bring us to negotiations. Mrs. Randall.
No meeting, no report.
And we are in the midst of scheduling, uh, negotiation sessions for units A and B. Uh, so just an update to the, to the committee. Um, and then finally, building in physical plant, Mrs. Leo.
We did have a meeting, um, on February 2nd, um, but we did not have a forum primarily to go over the capital plan for next year.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Leo.
And we're going to, we're meeting again right before, um, the public meeting. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, right before that March public, you know, at 5:45 or so, um, everyone has reviewed the, by the way, you all have the post-capital plan in your packet for information tonight, but budget subcommittee, uh, budget subcommittee has supported it, building a physical plant. We want to formally, uh, vote to support. So hopefully we'll get that vote in, uh, before the March meeting, before we ask you all to fund it.
Great. Thank you very much. Brings us to communications. Uh, there were two electronic items distributed to the committee, and then there's also a thank you note that, uh, you directed me to have sent from last meeting. Uh, that'll bring us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Nozick.
Thank you, everybody. Good to see everybody. Um, the first item in your packet is, uh, around pooled testing. I'm just going to give a really brief overview. All the information was in your packet. So, um, this is an opportunity for us to participate in a free sponsored by the Mass Department of Ed for six weeks pooled testing, which is truly to give just a symptom, uh, an asymptomatic, um, an opportunity to detect asymptomatic COVID cases by taking a snapshot or simply a pool of volunteer folks, um, who would participate in this. So we, again, it's a six-week free program through Desi. Our school doctor, um, thinks it's a great idea for us to do it. So um, with your permission, and we've just been, you're our final committee through the month, looking just for unanimous consent and support for us to participate in this program. Our nurses will, um, as they have done all year, really kind of do the heavy lifting around, um, working on communications, getting out parental permission slips for parents that would need to sign. And then um, for the, over the course of the six weeks that we are doing it, we would look to have, and we have not established the number of pools at the junior high or high school, given the size of the school. They'll probably be larger clearly than the majority of our elementary districts. Um, so we'll look for a number of folks who want to volunteer. They will go into, after they swab, do a nasal swab, they will go into a pool. They will put all of these tests in. If the pool test negative, then we wait for one more week and we look for the next pool of, of, um, kind of randomly selected folks. If there's a positive, the nurses would notify all of the members of that pool and they would meet and do a 15-minute rapid test, a PCR test. This would serve to identify who was positive in the pool, and then that person would follow all the DPH quarantine and isolation requirements that they would nor normally need to follow if they have this. We will be clear in our communication. This is not a school-wide testing program. This is not something that you can come in and say, you know, perhaps I was away with my family for four days. I'd like to get this test. That is not what this is. This is truly to be looked at as an additional tool in the toolbox to help you get ahead of any asymptomatic spread. We have had, I'm knocking on wood, you know, we have, um, had no evidence of, of a school-based, um, transmission. We hope to keep it that way. Um, so this again, just another tool in, in the toolbox. And I don't know if you had any questions on either that one, uh, piece document from the overview that our nurse leader and the nurses put together or the Desi FAQs around it, but we've looked for your support.
Well, let's first get a motion on the floor. So I, I need a motion to, um, to, to authorize um, engagement, uh, in the proposal as outlined by Dr. Nozick. So Mrs. Noiz Miller is making that motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hagerty and then Mrs. Noiz Miller. I noticed you got a question, so I'll give you the floor.
I just had a question, Erin, concerning when I read the, um, the frequently asked questions.
Mm-hmm.
It mentioned that no matter when, my understanding was no matter when it was started, that they were only going to fund till March 28?
They were, they were, and then they, um, the commissioner told us on the 11th that there was a chance it was going to be six weeks, no matter when you started.
Okay.
Um, I did, he never confirmed that. I did communicate with him and he did confirm that. However, I'll be honest, we had a conversation today with the commissioner and he seemed to think it would wrap up the week of the 18th, which would only put us at five weeks. So still trying to tease out what it is, but they did say, um, whether it would be five or six, but it's not going to be wrapped up on the 28th, thankfully.
Yeah, because I just figured by the time that the permission slips out and your tests and everything, it could be down to only three weeks.
Right, right.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We're good.
Looks good.
Other questions on the proposal? Mrs. Beleza?
Um, so I, did, were we going to test on a schedule, like, um, for example, give the test on a Monday so that the results aren't received over the weekend?
We, we are looking to target a Tuesday test date. So the lab that we have been partnered with through the Department of Ed, um, anticipates it will be a 24 to 48-hour turnaround once the, um, courier takes the tests to the lab. So by doing it on Tuesday, we would know by Thursday, so we could do those PCR tests and not have to worry about that. Um, that's a benefit of the week on, week off model as well is, is that, you know, they're all with us, um, that one week during this testing.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Any objections? Seeing or nor hearing any, I will deem the motion before you as approved by unanimous consent.
Thank you. Uh, I did include last month, literally the day after we met, I think we did get some updated information on the high school MCAS test. Last month, we talked about the middle school because we had received updated guidance on MCAS testing three to eight, but still had received nothing on high school. So I did include the general session information here. Unlike three to eight, which is truly for benchmarking to really help identify any deficits against standards. Um, our district invests a lot of time and resources in formative assessments throughout the year. The teachers do a great job. Um, so we don't worry that this is our, our one needed assessment. However, it is another piece of data just to help us identify where some gaps might be for different children against different standards. High school is going to be different at this point, is still going to be required for, um, competency determination. Um, so we do have to note our ability to meet the, um, ELA time as well as the math. The, I don't know if Mike or Mark want to chime in. We are at the process where we're starting to plan for this. Uh, I want to be candid and let you know this may indeed impact, um, the day, the scheduling. We now have to test two grades. And unlike an elementary school or even the middle school, we can't capture a whole classroom. We might be able to for, for sophomore English, but, um, as kids get into elective, they're multi-age and multi-grade. So it does make the logistics of that testing as well as the, uh, proctoring as well as the sanitation that we would need to practice. Um, so it may impact what the regular school day looks like. Um, but I would certainly keep you updated. Uh, Mike and I are talking on Friday morning. I think we have a meeting and I know, I know you folks have been already, um, in it.
Yeah, we met again today for the third time. So we think we have a good plan, but I'll run it by you Friday and I think we probably could share this with the group next month. Um, it is going to cause us to disrupt some days a little bit differently off schedule, but I think we have a pretty good plan.
Great. And this we had talked about, we had had some questions around the, um, Abigail, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and this will help students qualify for that from the state. So so we will keep you posted, but we did receive that information. Uh, I also included, uh, just, uh, four slides that at this point are, are very, um, probably well-known given the focus on vaccines and it really just identifies, um, the phases, the one, two and three for vaccine distribution. Uh, the state, as we know, is now into individual 65 over, um, or folks with two plus, uh, comorbidities. We also, um, surveyed our staff. The Department of Ed was collecting names of veterans. The Veterans Association has their own pool of, uh, vaccines separate from the state. So we did reach out. Um, that the turnaround was quite quick, but we did reach out to our staff over vacation. So we were able to submit a few names, um, where maybe some, some of our staff is able to access a VA vaccine ahead of waiting to be, um, number three in phase two, but, um, to be continued and anybody who, um, is eligible, we obviously look forward to getting, getting vaccines for that. Um, and then finally, just to touch really briefly, because we were notified yesterday as the, the, much of the world was around the commissioner and governor's, um, announcement around prioritizing um, more in-person schooling for students. He set, they both set the benchmark of April. So we will start to work on whatever that process would be. Um, really proud of the work that we've already done. Three of our four elementary schools already have well more than what we started with for cohort, um, except for one grade in Wales. Every student is in due to spacing um, already in Holland is at about 74% come the second week of March. So this was a commitment that we made in August that we would continue to proctor the health, um, metrics that we would look at. Spacing, we would look at everything. Um, the high school has done a really nice job at trying to get students who might be, um, I'll call them kind of on the fence between part hybrid, part remote and really saying that we, we need you to kind of make a commitment to, to where you're going to be because we do have students waiting. Um, and the middle school's been extremely responsive as well. So that coupled with the commissioner who announced that he'll be asking the Board of Ed for the authority to basically determine um, if remote or if the remote portion of hybrid will count towards time and learning, which we know we need to meet in order to actually, um, have it be a school year. So to be continued, just notified yesterday afternoon, uh, we did not have any, we did not have any, um, pre-information that that was going to happen or that was going to be said. So still kind of digesting that, but just want to, want to let you know that, um, that was announced as well.
Dr. Nozick, I know we also have a, one item under new business related to virtual school enrollment restrictions. Do you want to touch on that? And if there's a motion associated with it?
I, I think we're, I think we're all set on that, Mr. Valenzola. We did vote and I am happy to let you know that I did receive confirmation from the Department of Ed that they have accepted our letter, um, and our vote.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Nozick on her report?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll touch on public access. We'll open, open forum. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made by, oh, uh, before we adjourn real quickly, uh, we continue the process relative to the superintendent, uh, search. Uh, we have closed the window for candidates. Uh, those are confidential, uh, until we move, uh, folks into a finalist category. Interviews will occur next week in an executive session meeting on Tuesday evening at Burgess. Uh, and I'll provide a district-wide communication update, uh, at the conclusion of, of that session. So just a quick update for, for, for the committee. And with that, I didn't know Mr. Hagerty made a motion to adjourn and
So moved.
Thank, he did. It's been seconded by Ms. Cunningham and with that, we will, uh, see everybody in person uh, next month and we'll communicate out location, uh, et cetera, uh, in the coming weeks. Uh, I hope everybody, uh, enjoys the rest of the month of February. Thank you. Have a great evening.
You as well, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Bye, everyone.